Hello, welcome. We are convening the Medford City Council Public Works and Facilities Committee meeting for January 31st, 2024. Mr. Clerk, can you call?
I'm President Baer.
Present.
President.
Counselor Lozaro.
Present.
Counselor Sarpelli.
Present.
Chair Callahan.
Present. And I want to recognize Emily Lozaro, Counsel Lozaro, as our Vice Chair. Good evening. We will go on to the action and discussion items. And the primary one here is 24-006 offered by Isaac Baer, Council President. The resolution that each council committee review the 2024-2025 council governing agenda as amended at the January 24th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. So we do have that agenda in front of us. And as with the other committee meetings, we can go ahead and just run through those items to discuss how we are going to move forward on them for the next year or two. We will start with our major projects, and I'll start with the street and sidewalk repair and accessibility. While we don't implement street and sidewalk repair as a city council, we do want to be aware of and to also provide residents some awareness of what the city is planning to do in terms of street and sidewalk repair. And one of the first things that I would like us to do is to request from the administration, what are, which of the proposed plans in the 2021 Payment Management Study we have chosen? Or if we haven't chosen any of those plans specifically, then what are our plans for the next five years, including both the funding as well as which streets or category of streets we will be repairing? Comments from city councilors?
President Baer.
Thank you. Chair Callahan, yeah, I think this is so important. I think it's an issue. If you're asking me if there was a top three issue, this is one of the three. Everybody, regardless of whatever else they may believe, is frustrated with the condition of our streets and sidewalks. And I think that's really the ultimate question. You know, we've been trying to, I think, and trying to get at it from multiple angles, I think is really valuable. We've been trying to get at it from the budget side. What's our, what's our investment going to be in streets and sidewalks? We have this payment management plan. It says we need to start spending X by X to maintain the mediocre condition of our streets and sidewalks, never mind to actually start making improvements in the condition or, you know, the rating, they have this numerical rating of condition. So I would move, based on your statement, Madam Chair, to request that we receive and let me see if I can get this exactly right. And I didn't, don't have this in advance, so I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. To create a new paper in committee, in the Public Works and Facilities Committee, to request an update on the payment management plan from the Department of Public Works, including the plan, the financial plan recommendation that the city adopted based on the payment management plan, what that financial investment has looked like in the fiscal year since that plan was published, and when the plan will be updated. And hopefully, we can get answers to those questions and also have Commissioner McGivern or whomever from, maybe multiple folks from DPW, to present some answers to those questions and also allow us to have a discussion.
Do you think that we can request that for a month from now when we have our next?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm happy to, at the discretion of the Chair, to forward that motion to the Commissioner. And if he says, I need this much time to get answers to your questions, then we can put it on an agenda for next month or two months, whatever they need. But I'm, the timeline, I'm, the discretion of the Chair is fine with me and based on availability and capacity of the city staff.
Yeah. Do we have, does a motion, do we have?
It's a motion, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Sarpelli, second motion. All in favor?
I.
Oh, yes, please do. Read it back and then we can have a discussion.
Please jump in and add it.
Sure.
President Baer has moved to request that we create a new committee to request update on the payment management plan from DPW, including the financial plan recommendation that the city adopted based on the payment management plan since the plan was published and when that plan may be updated.
Yes, and I think also what the city has spent relative to payment management since the plan was published.
Also, I'd like to clarify what the, what the city has spent on payment management since the plan was published.
Yeah, and like by fiscal year.
I have a second for Counselor Sarpelli.
Yeah, and you don't, you could also, we could discuss my motion more if people have further.
Any discussion?
I think that probably first, maybe on its own, on its own paper, I think that's something that was relevant years ago, and we're seeing the fact that our roads, especially our sidewalks, seeing the negative impact, especially after all the bonding that we've provided. And then the feedback that we've heard back was that a lot of the lack of functioning of the projects is due to lack of licensed contractors that can do the job and then because of the season. Something I put out a few years ago, I'd like to bring it back and maybe put it as a motion or with this, or a separate motion that we asked the Commissioner to do a cost analysis of starting again our own sidewalk and hot top crew. When we presented this, I think my first term, I had the ability to take the, the DPW director in the neighboring community, who actually broke down the equipment that's needed, the type of vehicle that would be needed, the three staff members plus their benefits, and what it came, came down to is having a crew that worked through the warmer weather and, and, and working at our pace to do that, the sidewalk repairs and sidewalk management plan. It really benefited neighboring communities where Medford, what I've, my bonus contention is, and I'm sure Counsel Baer remembers that, when we keep, when the administration keeps coming to us for $2.5 million bonds to redo sidewalks and stump removal, and to this day, another piece to this is having that list updated and reporting back to us. I think that it'll be good for the new council to see what we've done with that $2.5 million and how little gets done with that in a certain amount of time. So I don't know if we can add that or maybe as a second motion, you know, ask, follow up with the director of DPW, Commissioner, to maybe put together a budget request for a hot top and sidewalk crew with the staffing and materials needed. And that doesn't have to be done by next month, but it might be something we could look at for the budget season and saying, well, look at this impact, you know, let's do the math. If it's 200, 2.5 million and we've only done, you know, 400 panels, sidewalk panels, and what's equivalent to neighboring communities, what does it take to do 400 panels? And we see that there's a drastic financial difference, I think that we should, we should really entertain that. I think that we've offered it, and I know some DPW directors in the past have wanted to do it, but it's always been frozen at the administrative level. And the other piece to that is the benefit of having a sidewalk and hot top crew with potholes all year round. If there are downtimes, that those three staff members could also be used in the Parks Department if needed, could be used in different departments when needed, you know, when you do see a lag. So if that's okay with.
Counselor Sarpelli, thank you so much. I love that idea. I might suggest that we add to this motion that we have a report back not only on the payment management study, which is specifically roads, but there's also a sidewalk study?
Yeah.
So maybe that belongs in it and then maybe a separate motion for a comparison of the price of having our own sidewalk.
And hot top.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Versus the way that we're currently doing it.
That's a good idea, add the sidewalks to that, and then I'll, I'll make the second motion.
Yeah, and then my apologies for the, I intended it to be pavement management and sidewalk management. I like that. I think, and we could add that further amendment, the sidewalk management. We could also add, when we talk about the spending over the, since the, since those plans were released, including the, the bond orders as part of that, like what, how much work was done on each bond order, how much remains to be bonded. I think that's really it, you know?
Was it used?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
The time for our new members is that weather got in the way, lack of, I believe at one point, we're hiring landscape contractors to do sidewalks because they were so limited for, for licensed contractors that typically do this with having some time to do it. So.
Yeah.
We got that desperate. So I would hate to do that, you know, because I think we might see the ramifications a few years down the line when we're bringing people that didn't do things the proper way, if that's the case.
So maybe the bond, what was done under each bond, how much remains to be bonded, and whether or not the availability of licensed contractors affected what projects were conducted.
That's good.
This motion's going about two full pages. If you give me the motion, you want to come into the committee report, I'll make sure that that's the one that's in.
Will you send me what you've written?
Yes.
And then I also was wondering if, when you make your next motion on the, as Chair Callahan said, on the sidewalk pavement hot top crew, whether potentially they could also serve another, another DPW priority that we had was the main streets and sidewalk, the main, the major sidewalks, snow removal pilot that we had, I don't remember, we have a, there's a big map in that desk from Commissioner Karen's of, these are the main routes in the city. And could we, could this, could the city take responsibility for sending out a Luke Sidewalker, for example? And clearly, that is the name of one of our sidewalks.
Sure is.
By the way. Look it up, Google it. Back when we had a newspaper that was newsworthy somehow. And, but could we, could this crew potentially also, in addition to being available to the other departments, would that maybe be also an alternative?
Part of their equipment.
Exactly. Part of their equipment, part of their duties could just be.
That's a great idea.
A sidewalk maintenance. Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Lozaro?
I support all of the requests for reports, just I would want to keep an eye toward not giving, giving the city staff enough time to generate those reports, so it's not overwhelming as we request them, just like with, with respect for how much work they have to put in to do those reports.
Right, this is something for budget season, my request.
Yeah.
So it still gets some time, so.
Awesome. Great. Is there more discussion? Do people feel comfortable, even though this is a very long motion, do people feel comfortable voting on the motion?
I love listening to Adam get cramps in his fingers, so I think it's great.
And I do think for timing's sake, we should split them. One is like, what is the information of the stuff we've already done and what is like, can you come up with an estimate and an idea of a new thing? And that might, as Counselor Sarpelli and Lozaro noted, take more time and maybe is waiting on the deputy commissioner to be hired, and there's a bunch of factors there.
But I believe that currently we're only considering your motion.
Okay, good, you're good, sorry, yes.
Second, our Counsel Sarpelli.
Awesome, awesome. Great. Any more discussion on the first motion of President Baer? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Sarpelli, do you want to make that motion now or do you want?
Would you like me to repeat that motion?
Let me give you what I.
Yeah, okay.
Because I was, I was not able to capture everything because of the back and forth going on. Counselor Sarpelli moved to ask the DPW Commissioner to do a cost analysis for road and sidewalk repairs and to request a sidewalk and hot top crew to do that work in-house.
Right. And to add Counsel Baer's comment, that other, look at the cost for a Luke Sidewalker to, to move, to, to also add as one of their duties.
Yeah.
So I think that that rounds off a whole team. When you look at sidewalk, hot top crew slash snow removal on main, main sidewalks, that's, that's a pretty complete position, so. And I did, I did Google it, he is right.
I'm going to use the word Luke Sidewalker.
Please use Luke Sidewalker.
To have that added into the duties, okay?
Yeah.
Or if you want to use Chewbacca shovel.
Is that in there too? I think the intent is to say.
Get rid of it.
What would the equipment and the personnel cost be for in-house maintenance of sidewalks and hot top and?
Snow removal.
And snow removal on priority sidewalks?
Snow removal priority says I'm like, snow be one phenobie.
Stop this. Is anybody else watching this?
There's a second gavel. Give me the second gavel. Please, second gavel. It's in the second drawer. It's smaller.
Does it go boing?
It actually just hit me right now.
Seriously, it did.
He did say, snow be one phenobie, is that?
I said nothing of the sort. But then another year, you said that.
Wonderful. Any more discussion on this motion? Seconded by Counsel Lozaro. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great, let's go ahead and breeze through some of these other ones. We have one under city facilities and equipment. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this one?
Yes, and I'm happy to volunteer as the lead on this. This has again been something we're trying to get our hands around in the budget side of things of what are all of the facilities we own and what is the cost for us to bring them all up to a state of good repair? And then what is the annual cost to maintain them in a state of good repair? Big questions, but also essential questions. I saw we had an email from, from Mr. Kraus about Chevalier and about Condon Shal, so maybe he wants to talk about that as part of this. As a member of the council's representative on the Medford Brooks Estate Land Trust Board, that's another property that is city-owned that, you know, has, has needed significant support to get to a state of good repair, to get into a functioning business model. You know, Chevalier has come a long way, obviously, in the last 30 years to where it is now really an economic heart of our downtown, but it still needs serious maintenance. It's an old building, it needs new, new things, it needs maintenance. So, you know, and those are just two, two properties. We have the Hegner Center, which is abandoned functionally. We have all of our fire stations, we have the new, new police station, the new library. Maintenance was an issue for the new library in the last budget. So I know it's difficult. We now have a facilities manager, it's a one-person show. A lot of, I'm sure his time is spent actively managing minor repair projects on, you know, and maintenance projects across the city's facilities inventory. But figuring that, that main question out of what is, what is everything that we own? What would it cost to bring them all up to a state of good repair? And then what is the cost to maintain those buildings at a state of good repair? We're in another building right now where we have punched out panels in, in 80 to 100 year old windows. I mean, it's pervasive across all of the city-owned facilities, except for basically the library, the police station, and, and I don't even know anymore about the DPW yard. We're coming up on 15 years, 10 years of that being a new facility. And one, if we're going to be building new, if we're going to be building a new fire headquarters, if we've just built these new buildings, we need to be investing in maintenance. And if we're going to have, you know, Brooks Estate has no devoted line item right now from the city. The Chevalier, I believe Mr. Kraus said, that the custodian line item that got paid not out of the general fund last year, that came from money that should have been going from the casino fund to Chevalier. So, you know, when we talk about not having the resources we need, whether it's on the operational side to have a hot top crew and the equipment that we need, or we're talking on the capital side to have, you know, on the operating side for maintenance, for capital expenditures, and then the capital side of like deep investments in renovations or reconstruction, we need to be able to answer those questions to give the scope to the community of, of where we're going to go. So it's not a motion, but that's just, I'm happy to take this one on. I think it's a major project. I think we should do something similar maybe at our next meeting.
Yep.
To, not necessarily have him at our next meeting, but the motion we just made around streets and sidewalks where we have a little more progress, perhaps in our next meeting we could have a discussion about, and maybe I'll put something on the agenda to refer to this committee, to invite the facilities manager to have a similar discussion.
And if I can, Madam Chair, I think that what's important is I don't, I don't know if you can effectively do that job unless you have a true understanding of what, like you said, the facilities, what's needed, how to have a working document, because, you know, as we said, it could be windows one day, but as the windows need repair, it might be flooring, and then understanding how that breaks down. So I think that, I know that we've in the past had a comprehensive study done for all the buildings, but I think if we, you know, invite the, I've yet to meet the facilities director, maybe inviting him to one of our next meetings and asking them if they do have a comprehensive plan, you know, with what Counsel Baer was saying, so we can see, you know, what a working document looks like to maintain or bring these buildings back up to par and making sure that we stay ahead of things. I think that the other piece of that, there are so many things that we need and there are so many avenues that we can use, but there truly isn't a point person that, at least I haven't heard yet, that can look at different grants and different avenues that we can use to fund these projects. So I know it's a good start to have a facilities manager, but I would love to see what other communities have. I mean, most communities have a facilities manager that has an assistant manager, that also has a facilities crew that does electrical, they have a electrician, a plumber, and a carpenter that's on staff, that you're not wasting time or, or money bringing out, bringing outside contractors to do things we need, in, in most cases at a minute's notice. So I think that that's how most facilities teams work in most communities. You know, I, I remember when Medford, the school department used to have its own, own maintenance team. They had locksmith, electrician, we had a plumber, we had a carpenter, we had a painter, that they worked, you know, even, and again, this is with the old schools and hybrid schools that they kept them up as much as they could, but we're looking at what's so-called the new schools now that are now dated and in desperate need of upgrades. So I think that having the new facilities manager come to us and, and believe me, I don't expect the person to come up and say, yeah, this is all we need. I think we might have to look at asking the mayor to do a, bring in a consultant that goes through the whole building like Weston and Sampson, that other communities use, that go through all of our buildings and come through with the honest assessment of what we need, you know, priorities, starting high priority first, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sarpelli. I completely agree, I think, having some sort of assessment. And I do think that if, with a new facilities manager, that is exactly the time for them to be given a task like this, as long as they have enough time, because it really sets them on the right path of being aware of all of our facilities and the, the shape that each one of them is in. It'll help them to get all of that information onboard quickly.
Agreed.
Any other discussion around this one? Moving on to public restrooms in parks and squares, and Counsel Art Sang is not here, but it is fairly self-descriptive, just developing plans to have more public restrooms in our parks and squares. Moving on to ordinances, is there any discussion? We're good. Ordinances, the lead ordinance, Counsel Baer, do you want to introduce this one?
Yeah, absolutely. And I believe this one is, is awaiting a paper number. I don't think it's been formally introduced yet, that's correct. Happy to work on it with you, Madam Chair, the, as well as our water and sewer superintendent, DPW Commissioner. I know that there are communities that have adopted lead ordinances, neighboring communities pursuant to federal regulations and similar ordinances around lead in, in water. So they have kind of a template document that they're looking at. So I'd be interested to, you know, sit down with, get that template, work with them, maybe the two of us can sit down with them, we can bring that here to this committee to begin the process of passing that ordinance.
Any discussion?
This would be about private, this is about private connections to the public.
Yeah. Great. Moving on to a home world petition to increase excise taxes for large trucks. This is Vice President Collins is taking lead on this. Is there anyone that wants to introduce this one?
I'm happy to.
Vice President Baer?
I just think the.
Vice President Baer.
That's, that's, that's my true title. I still, that's what rings in my head. I think Counsel Collins' intent here is that because of the significant, that we know that very large vehicles and heavy vehicles damage our roads much more than lighter, smaller vehicles, should, given the impact on road conditions, should those, should we all be paying the same flat rate on our excise tax just based on the value? You know, you could have a, I could have a $100,000 sports car that weighs two, you know, it was very light. I don't. Maybe Counselor Sarpelli can get me in on the, on the solar industry and we can figure that out. Or I could have, I could have a, you know, 5,000, 6,000 pound, 25-year-old truck, right? And I'm paying almost nothing on the truck because it's worth almost nothing, but it's damaging the road way more than the lighter, more expensive, higher value car. So the intent here is to at least ask the legislature if they would let us assess our excise tax based on impact in addition, impact on road condition in addition to just the value of the vehicle.
Any other discussion? Moving on to the oversight and engagement, public utility accountability. So really is looking at holding utility companies accountable to provide services and benefits to the community and mitigate impact of their assets and poor asset condition on the city.
I think that we've seen, Madam President, to the Chair, I believe, it said, where, I think that we're seeing our city engineer being more proactive when we're opening our streets to private entities, let's say a resident wanting to change from a lead pipe to copper water pipe. I believe the new, new policies in place now that the homeowner now has to pay the contractor to go curb to curb, which if, if, what bothers me with that is that it, I don't know, there's still question, I think, to ask the city engineer that when the utilities come in, are they mandated for the same type of restoration? If they open the street, from what I've been told, they're not. They open up the area that needs to be open that they can get to, they resurface it, they let it sit one cycle, and they come back and resurface it. But I think that's, that's not fair. I think the basic resident, the homeowner, or the landlord that has to pay for the, the safer, you know, transfer of lead to copper is now bringing up the rate that's falling back on the consumer because now the, the contract is not saying, okay, let's, let's keep it the same price. They're boosting the, the price to an unimaginable fee. And I'd like to know if we're seeing the same with the utilities. Our biggest issue right now that we've seen and heard from time and time again, using Winthrop Street as a good example, that street has been opened up, I think, maybe 10 times in the last 10 years. And you're looking at the same, the same areas being opened up, but there isn't collaboration with, you know, National Grid gas work to Medford's infrastructure water pipes that I think that if there could be a better way to communicate that, to minimize any of the resurfacing of the roads, but I think that the biggest thing with, I believe this is the, having the utilities coming in and going curb to curb as well. So I, I believe that's something that we need a better understanding, maybe through a motion is, is just asking the, some clarity with the city engineer, just to give us a report of what the utility standards are when opening streets and for private residents that want to make, you know, change their, their water lines. Just so we have an understanding and then, um, because I, you know, we've heard it for years now. The biggest concerns and issues we have in our roads and sidewalks are the fraudulent work done by the utilities when they come in and not being held accountable. The biggest part of that is also that most communities have what's called a clerk of the works. That when they are doing a job, permitted a job, you have a clerk of the works for the DPW that watches and oversees the, the, uh, the opening of the area, the closing, then the cleaning of the area. So, um, that's something we asked for in the past. I believe we asked for that, if we could ask for a, um, fee to be added to any roadwork, that would pay for clerk of the works. And we were told that's can't happen. So that they told us that that's, um, something that we can't, we can't request, but, um, if we can get that motion to the, to the city engineer to give us a better understanding of, you know, the utility side of the roads and hopefully we can police that a little bit better.
Um, thank you for mentioning that, uh, Counselor Scarpelli. Um, it also reminds me that, um, I heard this same thing that you, you say that you have heard for many years. I also heard this talking to, um, neighbors at their doors. Um, and also I wonder if we can fold into this, um, to understand from the administration how much coordination there is, because in some other cities, they put a moratorium, like once a road is truly repaved. Um, and brought up to like a,
There is, I believe it's five years, one new road.
And my understanding is that, is that then there are a lot of emergencies and that this happens all the time. So to really have an understanding from the administration of what that moratorium is, what can get in the way of it, how often it happens, that in fact, it's torn up, you know, much more quickly than every five years. So, so I think that might fold into that, or it could be separate. Um, Counselor Lazaro?
Um, in addition to the ripping up the roads issue of public utility stuff, I think there's something that's a big concern about the, um, functioning of the, you know, the substances themselves, like the, the gas, the, um, gas leaks and various things like that. I would be very curious to keep track of, uh, that everything is moving along properly. I remember when I worked for Christine Barber, she was working on a gas leaks bill and I was just trying to research if that ever passed. This was like 2017, 2018. Um, but that Somerville at the time was one of the, one of the municipalities that had the highest density of gas leaks. And it was, what, what happened was Somerville residents or every, every resident pays for the leaks that as the gas leaks, it, it, the, the rate payers pay for it, the, the um, utility doesn't pay for it. So the bill was to say, you know, fix the leaks. Obviously first, but also if you can't fix the leaks, you pay for the, for the leaks and then the rate payer shouldn't pay for it. So the fact that that wasn't happening was utterly insane. I'm not even sure if it passed. I'm still trying to research it, but, um, yes.
Leaks that we do have, and if they can update us with that, because they have in the past where they tell us what level leak that we have. Um, so that might be helpful to that. And then we could see, you know. Sorry, sorry, Adam.
I, I have an update on that.
Yeah, yeah, good.
So several years ago, creates feedback when I turn it on. Um, okay. Um, several years ago, uh, you were on the council and the council passed an ordinance asking, uh, utilities to report gas leaks within the city and they had to be reported to the clerk's office. And for, um, I sent out a round, I sent out a round of letters, didn't get a response. So then last year I sent out another round of letters. And I got a response from one utility that said, federal law says we don't even have to respond to this because there, there's a whole different, there's a whole different standard for utilities and they're, they're governed by federal, federal law more than state law. And they don't have to, they don't have to, they don't even have to respond to municipal legislative inquiries. So I'm about to send out this year, I'm about to send out this year's letters, but I'm going to get the same response.
Well, we, we don't, we don't have to, um, allow permits. I mean, it's very simple. Like what's good for the goose?
President Bear.
No, if I could to that point, I've had some good conversations. I think maybe the clerk and I and and the engineer had a conversation in the hall a couple of weeks ago. Um, that's basically where we're at. So things are not being issued until backlogs of promised repairs and maintenance begin to happen is essentially my understanding. I don't want to go beyond the scope of a short informal conversation versus what I agree with a motion to have a full conversation. Um, but, you know, uh, that was my understanding of where we're at, certainly with our friends at National Grid. Um, I, I obviously I don't think the MWRA and others are of the same scope, but, uh, I'll leave it at that. Um, there is also, and I'm trying to find it in here. Um, there is some stuff in the, there's some provisions in the Municipal Empowerment Act proposed by the governor regarding some accountability for the utility companies. It may have just been double poles. I'm trying to find it right now. But it would give the city more, um, authority around double pole. Double pole enforcement, the city section will allow cities and towns to, uh, enforce the statutory prohibition on double poles. Penalties, uh, authorized to be imposed are limited to a thousand dollars per occurrence.
To that, I believe Council Mox spearheaded that process and I don't believe we have many double poles left.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Yeah, I think that, I think that with that, uh, announcement, I think Council Mox was very proactive with making sure, and I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that all of the double poles have been converted back to the single pole. So I'd like to get an idea, maybe ask, I think, I think, uh, Mr. Randazzo might be the person to ask.
You know, I'd be happy to. And I was just pulling this up because I couldn't remember if it was just double poles or if there was a more expansive state law around giving us a little bit more authority over the utilities. Um, it looks like it's just double pole enforcement.
That's funny because when we asked the gas company, the, uh, was it Harvard Street we had the issues? With some serious, uh, high level, uh, gas leaks. They were pretty forthcoming with the report of how many we had. And I, I don't think it was really meant to poke the bear, but it was really made for just, uh, information gathering. So we stayed atop of things with the neighbors that called. So, uh, that's a little alarming that the utilities would say that though. That's, that's pretty disheartening.
Yeah.
Um, so there, uh, yes, Counselor Lazaro?
I don't mean to interrupt you, um, but, uh, I, I do think that if, if we can, as, as this act of council now sort of pick up the, the, the work that's been done without replicating it and carry it forward. I think that's really important and, and keep, uh, you know, staying on top of the utility companies as, as we move through this term. I think that's really important. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, do that, or I don't know if Counselor Scarpelli feels that part. It sounds, you do have the institutional knowledge and yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'd be eager to do that just to, because I, I, I wouldn't want to waste the energy of like, if, if somebody's been doing it and that this kind of the double pole thing is, is already covered and stuff that, that has been discussed is, you know.
I think we could pull form all papers. You know, I, I think maybe bringing in the representative that we work with, with especially National Grid was super, super helpful when we had the Harvard Street issue. So maybe just having an open conversation with one of their leaders to say that might've been policy sent from a letter, but more of a personal level, maybe there's a way that we can get some information that we need.
Right. Like once people are just talking to each other, it's not, it doesn't need to be contentious. You can just give us the information you have and we can go from there. Yeah.
Good. Um, Counselor Scarpelli has a motion on the floor and, uh, right as we read it back, if you want to, no, no, just let me know if you think it makes any sense to add in something about the moratorium and how often it is broken. Um, so let's go ahead and read that back.
Counselor Scarpelli moved to ask the city engineer for what's, for what the utility standards are for utilities open to streets and for private residents who meet the streets open for work on their water lines and other issues.
For the engineer, motion for the engineer.
So the idea is the discrepancy between the utilities, what the utilities have to do with private residents.
Just understanding the policy. I think that's the first thing. Once we understand the policy, then I think we can move on something in this committee.
All right.
And I think then Counsel Lazaro had maybe something that.
Uh, do we want to have a second for this motion?
I have a second. I can want a second on that too.
Second? Maybe.
We can always add my stuff as a different motion or something. That's fine.
My little joke gavel.
One of the blow up ones.
One that goes.
The squeaky ones.
Trust me, when it, when we get to the budget, it'll feel like that for all of us.
We'll all be wearing big red noses.
Any more discussion on, uh, the Counselor Scarpelli's motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes? Um, great. We are near the end here. Um, uh, did you have a motion? Did you?
Do I need a motion to say that I, and I would move to, uh, let's see, I would move to lead the uh, oversight and engagement of public, public utility accountability?
Oh, yeah.
With Counselor Scarpelli? Sure, I'll make that motion. So moved.
Do we have a second?
I didn't, I don't know what it was. Um, I, uh, uh, can't, mm, motion to, uh,
Except for to be the co-lead.
Co-lead the oversight and engagement of public utility accountability.
With?
With Counselor Scarpelli.
Seconded by Counselor Scarpelli?
Second.
Or Counselor.
Already? You need to do it?
Exactly.
Okay. Do you want to read that back and then we'll take a vote? How the discussion and vote?
Counselor Lazaro moved to co-lead, uh, for the oversight engagement of public utility accountability with Counselor Scarpelli.
Any discussion? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, the final thing on our list, um, is simply the tree planting volunteer network. Um, that is really something that we're, we're at a very early phase. We're just at the point of like talking to city staff. Um, and kind of seeing, you know, they're like talking to city staff and also, um, looking at what other cities have done. Um, just to get an idea. So we're, we're not, I think, at the point of any kind of an ordinance or taking action. So the, the idea is that, um, the city would allow certain, um, volunteers, residents to, um, with training, with, uh, you know, the proper placement, with the proper trees, with, uh, the proper depth. Um, and with all the training to be enabled to participate in the planting of certain city trees.
Just, I, I know that just probably the, having the union president involved, making sure that that's the biggest issue when you talk about any sort of volunteer work, especially when it comes to DPW and, um, I remember that, uh, and it, most of the time it's not a big deal, but I think that even cleaning up behind the high school. Remember the, uh, the hill? And we came in with about three teams full of kids that wanted to clean that area. And just making sure that, uh, DPW gets paid overtime to do that. Uh, just weren't informed and they understand. I, I don't think that it's ever been a problem. I think it's something that just the, they want to be part of the, the information. So whenever we do anything with volunteering, I think making sure we have that as, uh, a priority, just to make sure that, uh, they're in the loop.
Great.
All right.
Wonderful. And I, I do think also that as a, like if this becomes something of a resolution or who knows what exactly it will become. Um, that it will be for, it's kind of stopgap measure, that the purpose really is to have a larger, um, tree planting crew.
Right.
Um, but that at the moment, while we are dealing with budgetary difficulties, that this might be able to help us to increase our tree canopy. Um, President Bear?
Yes, just two things. And one on this topic, you know, we have, we've seen some very, very targeted increase in the forestry department at DPW. I think we added two tree climbers, um, last budget. Not a ton, but a little bit of movement there. So I, you know, I know. And, uh, Representative Donato and the administration and I were able to pull together a bunch of money for tree planting and stump removal. Um, last year, a combination of CDBG, state, uh, state ARPA earmark, uh, a little bit of bonding that we did. So there's been some, some movement on this. Um, the only other thing I wanted to add was I just wanted to note, uh, because I put it in as, as there was a paper in committee held over from actually now three councils ago, um, nineteen dash five five four is a resolution to add noise barriers along Route ninety-three. It actually was a resolution offered by Counselor Scarpelli end of 2019. Um, it is, you handed out the, the item report. Um, thank you, Chair Callahan. I just wanted to note. Um, that's still in committee that has not been done. I do believe we were on some emails with Rep Donato in 2020 or 2021 about an update, but we were still very far down the list.
Right. Uh, that was part of the process.
Yeah. Yeah.
Panels then.
Yeah.
But then it, it fell apart. So again, we're still in.
Yeah.
That's still gonna.
And they ripped all the trees down. So there's even less of us.
It's even worse now.
Yeah. So that whole Fountain Street area, all the way up to Gillis Field, all the way down to Sound Street Rotary, really. Um, and down from the river, Sound Street Rotary to the river, quite frankly, could use it too, but. Um,
It's funny, if you go down the road further to more, uh, affluent communities, they have the soundproof barriers all the way down one twenty-eight, yeah, supporting their city. So it's, it'll dishearten me. I know, and that's not Council Donato, I mean, Representative Donato, he worked. He worked his tail off to get what we have right now. And, uh, uh, when we first did ninety-three, when they first did the ninety-three project, they, for some reason, they asked for it on that side of the highway. But for some reason, we didn't ask for it on this side of the highway. So that was the biggest issue. And then, but he.
When I worked at the transportation department, they called me and asked me.
He called everyone.
Do, does anybody have an idea for what is the next step for this?
Uh, no, I just wanted to note that it's, it's, it's still there. It's, it's an item not on the governing agenda, but it is a paper in committee that has been held over as an active paper from prior councils. So.
Yeah, well, it might be something we can ask, stay representative, just to get us an update.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, yeah. I think he's pulled every rabbit out of every hat to try to make it work. So.
Yeah.
Great.
But just so you know, if I won the mega bucks, that was one of the things on my list. Just, you know, five hundred million gets a lot. So.
Gotta buy me a house first.
I already bought that.
Oh, no. Already?
Yes.
Already? Yeah, I'm gonna live in, under a solar panel at the Scarpelli residence. Butler Street rear.
Do we have any other, um, any public comment, any, um, discussion of anything else as we've reached the end of our sort of list of things that we hope to cover in this committee? So it was what we were just talking about just now. Oh, I apologize. Yes, nineteen dash five five four, resolution to add noise barriers along Route ninety-three.
It was, it was, it was not formally called. It's, it's.
Discussed.
Yes, it was not. It was not. It's not actually.
I did not call it from my chair.
It's not on for discussion tonight, but, but it, it, it was meant to, yes, it's a new way of doing the agenda. It's kind of an unfinished business item, but I, I'm sure we can entertain and make, we just, we just had an informal conversation about it. Yes.
Absolutely. Please do. Absolutely. Can you state your, uh, name and address for the record?
I got it. Um, I want to congratulate all the new councillors that were elected, first of all. I also want to thank all the, other political figures that ran and spent a lot of time and effort and cash. And, uh, I want to thank them for trying hard. Um, I came because on this, this, this agenda, it does say nineteen dash five five four. I didn't realize it was six years ago when I brought this up. And before that. And it says, resolution to add noise barriers along Route ninety-three on the north side. So I'm here to correct this because it was done. Well, first of all, I should back up to like more than 10 years ago, I believe, when, uh, as you mentioned, uh, to like 10, 10 years ago, I believe, when, as you mentioned, Mr. Donato, the state rep, he, he had done great things for the city, including getting Chevalier, all kinds of seats and you're speaking about trees, et cetera. So he's had some good clout in the state house. However, when he came forward and said, we have the cash in place in order to add a sound barrier on one side only, and that was the west side, which is the West Metford side of 93, in my opinion. So I said to him, and he didn't like it. I said, Mr. Donato, if you're going to give it to one child, why not give it to the other side of, of the 93 child? And he's made a comment, I don't want to misquote him, but it sounded to the effect like, oh, I've had a few complaints from, from some east side residents on the East Metford side. So my reply to him was, I can't see how a few people can sway you as an individual not to give it to our east side. So I don't recollect if there was any comment after the fact, matter of fact, there probably was not. So I was ecstatic to see this on the agenda yesterday and that's why I'm here. However, I'd like to see this corrected to, to, to state that on, on the east side of 93, not the north side, because this is west, east is on the opposite side and it's not north. And as Councilor Beers, I believe, mentioned certain areas that, that should have it. And I believe he said, and he's right, where I am near Riverside Avenue, it should start not just at Riverside Avenue, further south, about a football field tree for 500 feet probably, in order, actually we'll be on right on top of the river, on the bridge, behind the senior citizen center, because there's at least five condominium complexes there and houses on the Ship Ave and Marine Street area, which is, that alone is going to be 500 units.
I think that our clerk actually has some, some answers for you.
I can give you an answer on that, at least, at least on why it says 93 north as opposed to the east side or the west side.
Sure.
It's because, it's because when the petition goes into the transportation department, it's identified by the road and so the road is 93 north, that, which is why, which is why the petition goes in that way. So it doesn't make, when you look at the petitions that go into, that go into the DOT, it's, it's identified by the road and not by the location on the road.
Also, 93 goes in your opposite direction towards Boston South.
But south has noise barriers.
If I, if I could read-
Correct.
If I could, I just have it here, the full resolution from 2019 was, be it resolved that the city administration looking to adding noise barriers along Route 93 on the north side to mirror what is on the south side of Route 93. And I believe it, if, something we're saying, it's, it's 93 north and 93 south, there's barriers on the 93 south side, but not on the 93 north side, which would be the east side.
Right.
So is it worded, is it worded properly?
I think there's a semantics.
Satisfy my mentality?
It sounds like it's worded properly to satisfy the Department of Transportation. I agree with you that that, that the 93 north is on the east side.
I got a pretty good compass rose in my head, you know, I know my directions quite well. So, and it also, who wrote up the resolution? Does it state where it starts and where it finishes?
I was Councilor Scarpelli in 2019, not to put anyone-
Does it state where, where this barrier would start and where it finishes?
It does not.
Who makes that determination? Us?
Well, unfortunately, I think that this, the reason this has been stalled for six years is because it's really up to the state. This is not something that we can decide and our administration can implement.
There's a whole federal formula involved. It's, I mean, there's a, there's a whole federal formula involved with, with, with noise barriers and I, I, I'm a little out of, I'm a little rusty on it because it's been a while since I, since I did that when I was on the transportation side of, of things for the state. But there's a, there's a, like entire federal formula involving traffic and, and age of the road and how recently it was, it was updated and when it's scheduled to be, when it's scheduled to be updated again, or when it's scheduled to be overhauled or repaired again. There's a whole big numerical formula goes into play on it.
So do we know when this, if it ever gets started, when this will start?
I, I don't know the answer to that one.
Yeah.
Can you ballpark that timeline?
No, we can't because it's really up to the state. So we, we don't have any control over it. So what we're suggesting is that we reach out again to our state representatives to ask them for some information, but it's nothing that we are able to-
I really would appreciate that for at least half the population of the city, over 30,000 on the east side. We keep getting the short end of the stick.
Yep.
And we supply more real estate taxes than all the other three sections of Metford combined probably.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I want to say thank you, but it would be nice if it was done from day one, east meets west.
Fantastic. And any other public comment or?
Thank you. I'm Ken Kraus, 50 Mystic Street, Metford, also on the board of directors of the Francis Schubert Auditorium and Gene MacJim. I just want to thank the members of the council, present and past, for putting this agenda, the governing agenda together and for kind of revamping the committees and, and committing to regular scheduled meetings where I can see some potential for a lot of productive work to be done. Very excited about this particular committee. As was mentioned, Chevalier Theater has a lot of needs, many of which there's no really dedicated funding source to address them, the Chevalier Commission's Capital Improvements Committee was recently reconstituted and has probably 25 items on a, on a capital plan project list that we're starting to look for funding for them. As Council President Baer has mentioned, we have the facilities director now on hand for 13 months, has had a very detailed introduction to the facilities, particularly Chevalier, and I think his insight now into what would be most useful to have in the budget to enable us to kind of catch up on things that haven't been addressed and also put in the budget funds for preventive maintenance so we're not, you know, kind of chasing problems and doing things in a reactive fashion. But I just really want to say that the commission, the friends, the arts community is very eager to contribute and participate and give insight and support to this effort. I think the capital improvements plan that came out a year or two ago actually didn't mention Chevalier at all and that was disappointing to see. So I think we can correct that here by looking at the, the facility holistically and I think this will be a very useful exercise and I look forward to being engaged and thank you again for putting this out. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ken. If I could, yeah, and I just want to mention you, there's, there's, and this is where it's kind of, I think the crux of this whole issue around facilities and streets and sidewalks, we have a capital improvement plan or investment plan, whatever the acronym stands for, that is not attached to, at least in a way that I can meaningfully see, and if, if I or we cannot meaningfully see it, I would guess that most cannot meaningfully see it, to the assessments, pavement management plan assessment, the sidewalk assessment, and then the yet to be completed facilities assessment. And that's where it's, I think, I think I said this when the Collins Center was on, the Collins Center was like, oh, well, that's, that's impossible, basically. And I was like, that, that, that can't be impossible. It's just math. To, to say, okay, yes, so we're investing 100 whatever million over the next six years in capital improvements, great. How much does that accomplish? How much of the actual need does that get us down the road to fixing? How, how, what does that, and what are we getting from that investment? We're bringing something to a state of good repair where we're not spending good money after bad or not being Patty Smart and pound foolish. And that's again, just where the real frustration for me comes in is, great, we're spending, you know, it's, we, we can all say, it's the same thing that I think I said the other night about the budget. It's the biggest budget ever. Of course it's the biggest budget ever. Inflation is the highest it's ever been. Everything costs more than it's ever cost before. Every sequential budget better be the biggest budget ever, otherwise we just cut a bunch of stuff. So it's the same question here. We're spending $140 million on capital improvements, great. If we need $2 billion, then we're getting 5% of the way over five years. So take us 100 years to get there, which means we'll never get there. So sorry to rant, but thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm, I'm missing my position down here on the floor.
Okay, all rants aside, cut you off, President Baer.
I've been up at the, at the podium all month.
All rants aside.
Get it all out.
Is there any, is there any other discussion? No, there's not. Does anyone move to adjourn?
See, my, Vice President Collins is not here, so, you know, keep, keeping the leadership team happy. I'm, I'll second.
Great. Motion to adjourn from Councilor Scarpelli, seconded by Zach Baer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much to everyone. See you all next month.